Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And the man of the day has arrived, so we're going to start. And I want to clarify, I didn't say the Southeast Michigan Board members were in a fog. I meant they're caught up in a fog. And they're here with us now, so thanks for making the travel route. And the time is now 10 o'clock. And a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of December 16, 2014 is called to order. And we're going to, just one reason we wanted to wait for Board Member Varner is this is his day. We've got a resolution right up front. We have a reception tentatively scheduled for about 3:30 this afternoon to honor his service and his, the smarts that he brings to the table here. So the first item, order of, on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
By Dan, supported by Eileen. Any discussion, changes? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you, motion passes. Mertz, Maryland.
I'd like to introduce the people seated at the board table. To my immediate left is Mike Flanagan. He's chairman of the board and state superintendent. And as we go around the table, John Austin is the president of the board. He resides in Ann Arbor. Sandra Ulrich is the board's vice president. She resides in Rochester Hills. Dan Varner, the board secretary, resides in Detroit. Board member Luque Ramos Montini resides in Grand Rapids. Melody Arabu is this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year. She is a third grade teacher at Keith Elementary in the Wald Lake Consolidated School System. And as we go across the table, Craig Ruff, the governor's education advisor, will be arriving later, late morning. And then Eileen Weiser is a board member from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss, board member from Detroit. Michelle Fecto, board member from Detroit, and she's also the board's NASBY delegate, National Association of State Boards of Education. And seated next to me is Richard Zilee from Dearborn. He's the board's treasurer. Thank you.
And then would guests who are visiting the board meeting today, please feel comfortable to introduce yourself. And maybe we'll start with, actually Jared back there.
Jared Burkhardt, the Michigan Council of Teachers, School of Reform.
Good morning. My name is Howard Barron. I'm a Bloomfield Hills Board of Education.
I'm Amy Cook, Executive Director of Learning Forward. Judy Pritchard-McComb, Intermedia.
Senator Slumber, Catherine, Intermediate School District.
Paul Sala, Wayne County, Resa.
Jane Poyah, Traverse City Area College Schools.
Tom Green, Michigan Education Association.
And then a lot of the folks who work here. I don't know if this press dare introduce itself. I, journalists.
Chris Flavre, Longwood.
We love them.
Chief of Counselor, Board of Members.
I guess that means our guys are.
They can also.
We'd like them to, but they feel like they're here all the.
Well, he can start.
Okay.
Glad you're here.
I'm Marty Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs.
I'm Allison Henry, Superintendent's Office of Education.
A lot of people write her. Henry?
Yes.
That's her last name.
Well, my name also.
Kyle Grant, Deputy Superintendent for the Municipal School Services.
This is Roma Deppen, Superintendent, Office of Research.
Natasha Baker, State School Reform Design Officer.
Joseph Martin, Deputy Superintendent, Accountability Services.
Vanessa, Deputy Superintendent, Education Services.
Thank you, Margaret.
Ben Williams, Department of Education.
Ben Forward, Office of Education Improvement and Innovation.
David Head, Office of Public and Governmental Affairs.
And.
Jennifer.
Jennifer Cook, Department of Education.
Thanks, Jen. Well, today, in order to get ready for the first item that we have a resolution, I just wanted to say it's our day to say goodbye and thanks to Dan Varner. He's concluding his term as a member of the State Board of Ed. He's served on this board for over four years. And I have three things to say. The first one has two parts. And then there's a question. But speaking on behalf of the educators and students of Michigan, we're extremely grateful for the service Dan's provided. Dan has brought his own professional and personal perspectives to the board table. He's done so in such a collaborative and appropriate way. Although his leadership will be missed at this table, we know the citizens of Detroit, and ultimately all of us, will benefit from his leadership as the CEO of Excellent Schools Detroit. And so we continue to see him as a friend and advocate for our children. Dan, I think you're one of the best human beings I know. You just happen to be a great leader also. So I wanted to, this is a formal presentation we're going to have later in the, at the reception, but there's one thing I wanted to give you personally. It's in a Macy's box, but it's not new. This is actually a vintage Save the Children tie that I've had for over 20 years. This is one of my others. And I just thought with the proponent that you've been for our children, it would be appropriate and wanted you to.
Thank you.
For me.
Thank you.
I haven't worn it in quite a while either, so it's not that worn. Those were really big, 20 years ago. Here's another one. I have a bunch of them, but, and I know that the first item on the agenda is kind of our formal adoption of the resolution honoring Dan Varner. And the chair will entertain a motion.
I'd so move.
Moved by Kathleen. Richard. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And John, I think is going to make, for this part of the program, the beginning of the day, we have, as I said, one later in the reception.
We've got this resolution, obviously noting Dan's record of achievement and participation in civic life and education. I just want to say, what was it, five years ago whenever Reggie Turner stepped down? And I think he nicely encouraged then-Governor Granholm to nominate or put Dan on the board. And I remember thinking, I don't know this fellow. Boy, I hope he is someone that not only we all can work with, but someone with the right agenda for education, who we can work together in a very powerful way. And I have to say, I was incredibly not surprised, but thankful then when it emerged that Dan was not only probably among the most thoughtful, the most passionate, the most candid and straightforward, and the most effective, I think, advocate and worker on behalf of improving education. And it's been a joy to have you at the board. And it's been a wonderful partnership. We'll miss you here, but you are going to be continuing to make life better for the people and the kids that you care about in the state. And I want to thank you for that. And I appreciate so much your uptime here and look forward to watching you do your work and working together with you as we move ahead. So thank you, Dan.
You know, I, so I don't have prepared remarks. Just because if I did, there would be like three points, a question, all of that at the end. And I prefer just for emotion to take over. So I'm actually going to save that for the end of our meeting. And at this point in time, just say thank you and that it's been an absolute honor and privilege to serve with all of you. So thank you.
Mike, can we get a picture with the whole board?
That'd be great.
We'll miss Dan, so stand up. Sorry. I want his mug on my wall.
Pass them out. All right, one, two, three. We'll take a couple here, just to, there you go.
We're good.
Really?
Really?
I can't tell him.
Oh.
Yeah. All right. One, two, three.
Melody.
Thank you.
Melody. Get her in there.
Melody, I need a picture.
I thought I was scared. Good try.
All right, one, two, three, smile.
Journalists, journalists, come on. The whole room.
Great. Have more opportunities as the day goes on. Let's save this one until a little later. I also want, it's appropriate at this time to just, as you know, Joseph Martinow is going on to bigger and better things, and it's a giant loss for us, but we wish him well. And I didn't want to let the meeting go. I know we talked about this before. I thought, Eileen said it well when she said at one point in time when Joseph was presenting, he's quite easily understood. That's pretty good for a psychometrician and the kind of work he does. So I'd also like us to just thank Joseph for his service. MDE reception for Joseph later this week that I know the board's invited to attend also if they can make it. Last night, by the way, I tweeted, "Last week I said to the legislature, 'Don't fund roads on our backs.' Others today said it better, 'Don't fill potholes with textbooks.'" Call them. This is the most retweets I've ever had. And I just mentioned to John, before I came in here, there were many, many trucks driving down the street to, I'm sure, encourage road funding, but tweeted again, "Not on our backs." I mean, we've got to be vigilant. I know we're talking more about this later today. I'm hopeful something gets resolved in this way. But if you heard all that honking before, that's what it is, is a bunch of trucks that were lined up, ready to go encourage road funding. And, great, John, thank you.
In harmony.
It's the holiday season.
Pamela Smith-Pew has just walked in, our new board member who will start in January. Welcome, Pamela. We had an orientation, as we do for new board members yesterday, for Pam, who insisted on, we call her Pam, and appreciated you taking the time to be with the team yesterday. Happy Hanukkah begins today. It's a great season for people with all different backgrounds, so we're happy to have a meeting in this season. Our first item is Committee of the Hall. I did want to mention that the board, at its agenda planning, and I'll do my best on this, has asked to try to ask me as chairman to, so I'm asking really you to help me do this, which is one question apiece, but we keep going around until everyone's questions are exhausted. So it would never be that a board member can't fully use their authority as board members to get questions resolved. We were just going to try to do it that way. And so I'll try to manage that, but if you could help, that would be great. And I do think that's important to make sure that all questions are asked or all comments are made. That's why you're elected, so this isn't an intent to stop any of that, please. So the first item is discussion on Michigan School Organization and Finance. And I'll turn this right over to John's leadership on this, I thought has been great. Our own team met on this a number of times and made some suggestions also from an MDE point of view, John, that we appreciate the opportunity to make.
Very helpful, and I think we incorporated a lot of those. Let me just say first, Pam, we were just honoring Dan, who emerged four or five years ago, as a wonderful force and contributor on the board. And while we're sad to see him go, it's wonderful that the baton has been passed by the voters to you, and you're going to be a terrific addition to the board. And let me also acknowledge, Joseph, who would have thought that a psychometrician could get involved in education politics and all these things? Who would have thunk? But it's, I know the service that you've made here was sometimes challenging because of the sometimes challenging debates that rage about things like testing. But you were a great guide for all of us through that thicket, and appreciate your work. And we'll be sorry to see you go. Let me, so we, this topic of school finance and how we decide to open and close schools, we began a bit a year ago to take a hard look at this because then, and I think now, our schools are under stress and our educators are under stress. And most importantly, as I think we're all acknowledging, our outcomes in terms of learning and achievement aren't what they need to be. And relatively speaking, we're not seeing the achievement gains. And I think there would be a, hard to argue with the fact that 20 years after Proposal A, the last major overhaul of our school finance regime, we don't today have a good strategy for how we spend our money in line with the higher performing states. And we also are facing overall a time of declining enrollments, while we've also facilitated new schools and new choices, without really a strategy overall for how that works to improve achievement and outcomes overall. So I think we have to be smarter and we have to be more effective in how we organize education, in terms of the number and nature of schools, not the reform models, though we need to pay attention to those, and how we finance, and how we finance education generally. And that's what this examination attempts to do and the recommendations that I hope we'll make today. As most of you are aware, we listen to a lot of perspectives and insights and input from across policy, I would say, political spectrum, try to understand what's broke, how we fix it, gather good ideas for how we can do better to improve achievement and organize and finance our schools. And I would suggest, and I hope others are appreciating, that the very, I would say, credible analysis, including the analysis that we tried to include in this, in this context lane and recommendations, would conclude that there are some major issues that are important for us to make headway on if we're going to see improvement in achievement. And I would encourage us to appreciate that they include, despite increases in funding, on balance, we haven't gotten all those resources into the classroom. We have seen this declining enrollment phenomenon in our state and the creation of additional schools, which means that most schools are losing students and losing resources, and it's leading to some diminished quality in education for most of our schools and most of our students. And we're not spending smart. And I think this is probably, in my view, the major feature of what we need to focus on and encourage attention to. We are not following the strategy of how we spend our money that is most effective to lift achievement. We've not been spending on teachers and teacher quality. We've not been following through on supporting turnaround strategies with capacity and resources to do that. We've demanded many reforms without backing them with resources to implement, from Common Core to teacher evaluation, which I still hope will get some help with soon. And we have not been spending money differently for different needs and different costs, for at-risk students who need further to travel and need more support and resources. So the way we spend our money and spending it smarter to get better outcomes is a key direction, I think, for attention and change. Plus, there are big problems and new problems that always existed with Proposal A and new ones that have emerged since Proposal A that range from the absolute hole in support for infrastructure, and that includes technology for our school districts, that includes politically zero ability almost for locals to enhance their resources if they choose to. The strategy of Proposal A, three mill, regional mill, just did not work. And that may be an area where there's a lot of consensus, some ability to do better. We've seen, for a variety of reasons, the retirement costs eating up a lot of the resources that we certainly want to credit to the classroom. And we see great disparities in special education costs and spending of services, which, again, all of these issues were flagged by thoughtful analysts from the CRC to EdTrust Midwest to Phil Kearney, Mike Adenizio, and all the ones that I think we're relying on for sort of painting the problems and the recommendations. So I do hope that as we look ahead, the governor, the legislature of the year and years to come, that we will help work together and share directions of change in the way we finance and organize schools that are powerful, important to lift achievement and to improve outcomes. The recommendations that I hope we'll make include, let's have some level of effort that is consonant with what I think most people across the board want to see, some investment and support in public education. And let's try to keep up a good level of effort, which has dropped. But again, there's no magic number for what that level of effort is, so we need to spend smarter. Whatever we're spending, we've got to spend smarter. And that includes what the other states that are higher achieving all do, which is not what we're doing. And that's spending money differentially, more for at-risk, more for different costs of education where they exist, more for different levels of education that have different costs, and more for education programs that yield more outcomes. When you earn secondary and post-secondary degrees and credentials through earlier middle college or career technical education programs, that both costs more and delivers more outcomes. Kids are getting a high school degree and post-secondary degrees. That deserves additional support and investment. And finally, we need to back, and we need to back the reforms that we are making, whether it's standards or teacher evaluation, with the requisite capacity. And this is something clearly Massachusetts and others have done and would suggest is absent from our strategy. We make a lot of reforms, and we're responsible at this board table, but we've not backed those with the investment and to deliver the goods. We need to reform our charter choice strategy to be not kind of in co-ed, but to contribute to better outcomes for students overall. And there's three, I think, very common sense recommendations here, the direction of how we can do that. One is to have some sort of rational, community-informed needs process of where and how we need schools and new schools and charter schools, and not the kind of crazy quilt that we're seeing in Detroit and Flint and Grand Rapids and other communities, which is diminishing the services and quality of good charters as well as traditional public schools. You can't get the enrollment and leaving holes in our educational fabric. We need to soften the impact of rapid changes in enrollments, which are whipstawing our schools up and down financially, as other states do, where you don't lose all your money when you lose a student, and you have some time to adjust when choices are made. And we need to treat all our schools, charter and traditional, the same in terms of transparency and accountability, and in terms of whether any school district, charter or non, can open up any more schools if they're not providing quality education today. And I think those are recommendations this board has made, and they're the right recommendations, and so we wanted to call attention to those. And I think there are a number, and they're included in the report, of common sense fixes to some of the big issues, from how we could raise resources for infrastructure, which is sorely needed, and how we could help locals raise resources that they want to raise for education without creating giant equity problems again. And I think we need to encourage attention and action to these issues. So I think in making our recommendations and our, what I would consider a very thoughtful, even-handed analysis, we are calling attention to these issues, we're encouraging action, we're encouraging dialogue. We want to link arms with others to encourage thoughtful attention to how we rework our school finance and funding regime to support better outcomes. And I do hope we will support these recommendations today. And then work to advance and encourage as many as we can agree on and move forward in the real world of today's discussion about how we improve education, because that's what it's got to be about. So I really appreciate everybody's contribution and participation and feedback, and including the department. And we tried to include some of the very good recommendations of linking funding for best practice, research-based programs, for the at-risk funding as a clear next step that we could encourage. I really appreciate Mike and the staff's contributions to improving our recommendations and certainly appreciate everyone spending time and energy on this issue. And I view this as the first step. We need to continue to help promote the thoughtful attention to the issues and real solutions that can improve educational outcomes and issues.
Great, John, thank you. Very timely, given the new legislature's coming into being in January, and hopefully we'll take this thinking seriously. So comments and from other board members? Eileen, please.
Mine's fairly lengthy, and it's really a question of two things for me. One is the process that we went through, and then the second one is the paper, because of course, the timing for the new legislature is pushing us to do something about it. All the statements that are in this are worthy, there's no question about that, and they do define real financial needs that our schools are experiencing and hurting because they're not being covered. But just as they did in Massachusetts, I would say that Michigan's current outcomes call for an explanation of how better funding or more fulsome funding could be linked to, not just to the needs in the communities, but also to student outcomes. It's a list of things that are wrong, but not things that will create better student outcomes with better system accountability, in my eyes. Massachusetts took a good look at all of the aspects, including, I don't know what their level of local control was. That was not discussed in Bob Floden's session on how other states or how other ideas can be forwarded to make things work. But their money, their increase in money was linked directly to better accountability for the schools and better outcomes for students. So in a local control state, the biggest question that I've had with this is, what can we do? We are funded at the eighth highest per capita level in the country. Our teachers are the highest paid or within the top three in the country. I don't begrudge anybody that money, but being 37th, 38th, 39th on NAEP in ELA, in English Language Arts and Math, makes no sense to me. So for the legislature and the governor, who are looking at the entire universe of knowledge on this subject, not just what Michigan has been doing, but what Massachusetts is doing, what Florida's doing, what Wisconsin's doing, what all states are doing, Kentucky, it's not just a matter of putting more money into teacher training or changing teacher preparation. It's a question of what things are actually going to yield a better outcome, because more money is not going to solve it. So our hearings were only on why we needed more money. They were not on how it could create better student outcomes. We didn't use the department's knowledge and expertise in a way that was public, nor did we use real-world data, but we were lucky because Bridge did and MSU did with us. In the last couple of months, I've been heartened to see the specifics of student outcomes listed, but the imbalance in the public hearings has created an ambivalence or worse in the legislature about our governance and the department's ability, to be quite frank, because they're not seeing that data from us. They're seeing it from other states, they're seeing it in the paper, they're seeing MSU pull it out. So I cannot vote yes for this without a well-developed section on how Michigan's local control strength can be used for its weakness, which is its current student outcomes. And I believe that the information that's in here is excellent, I just believe it's missing a big section. And without that, I don't think you'll have any impact with the governor's office or with the legislature, which should be our goal, improving things for children. Thanks.
Thanks, Eileen. Kathleen.
Well, I think John's done a remarkably good job overall with this. And he's pulled together a lot of the information that we had, and I thought we had presentations from a wide variety of folks from different spectrums, of the political spectrum and different backgrounds. And I thought we tried to do a very objective, nonpartisan, or bipartisan, if you want to call it that, presentations over the course of the six months that we had these presentations. So I think that's very important. I have some concerns about the, some of the figures that are in here, which I discussed with John. One of the things that I think it gives a sort of, Eileen sees it from one angle and I see it from a different angle, that it gives not a very accurate description. When we talk about the funding per pupil as the 22nd highest in the, eighth if adjusted for capita Income, we have a lot, a high percentage of children in poverty in Michigan, especially in. One of the things that I think it gives a sort of, Eileen sees it from one angle, and I see it from a different angle, that it gives not a very accurate description. When we talk about the funding per pupil as the 22nd highest in the, eighth if adjusted for per capita income, we have a lot, a high percentage of children in poverty in Michigan, especially in our urban centers and many in the rural areas, and some in suburban areas as well. Certainly the inner ring of suburbs around Detroit, there are a lot of children in poverty. And that means that we get more federal aid, and I think that's what contributes to this $12,000 figure that per pupil spending. And it also means that our per capita income is lower, because we have so many people in poverty, so that it's an distorted picture, I think. I think it's even, we have more challenges than even Massachusetts has. Massachusetts has a whole center of highly intellectual, highly educated, highly paid people in a small state, and they do have problems, they have people in poverty too, but the percentages are much higher here than there. And it's certainly been exacerbated during the last six or eight years since the recession, I would call it a depression, this major recession. So I think that's something we have to consider, and I think that, as John described our policies, they don't make sense. What he described, I agree with his description of the charter school policy, where it's just wide open and there's no control over it all. The authorizers, any authorizing can go any place and open a school, and there's no, you don't know if they really need that school there, if there's a need for it, and presumably they do market research, but it's still, there's no, there's no overall supervision of or coordination of where and when they open schools. So as we're losing student population, we're increasing the number of schools. That, on the face of it, doesn't make sense. So we're destroying our traditional public school system in the process, and that's very worrisome to me. I think I've used this quote before, I got a letter with just a note from a constituent a couple of years ago now, who wrote to me, says, "If I could do this, please save public education. It's what made us a nation." And I believe, I believe that, I agree with this constituent who wrote me that letter. And I think to destroy the traditional public education system is, would be a tragedy. And I think that's the way we're headed, and it really worries me. So we, I think we have to come up with a much better policy on creating new schools, and that's absolutely essential. And then we have to come up with the details of how we're going to change the revenue stream. And of course, this latest business with the roads, which we're going to take a position on this afternoon, I presume, worries me too. I mean, to just cavalierly, even if it's not the policy that's adopted, to be considering a policy that saves the roads at the expense of education, absolutely is foolish. I mean, it doesn't make any sense at all, any way you look at it. Economically, I mean, you need educated people, people aren't going to come to a state or stay in a state that doesn't have good public education. And you need roads too, but to fix the roads at the expense of education just makes absolutely no sense to me at all. And that, the idea of depending on the economy growing is very iffy at best. So it might be good, short, I hope it happens, I hope they're right, but it might be short-term, then what happens? We're back where we started from. So we have a lot of problems, but I think overall, this is a very good start, and we go on building from here with more details of where we get the revenue, how we get the revenue. So thank you, John.
Thank you, Kath. Thank you, Richard. And then Cassandra.
I concur with a lot of things which Kathleen has initially stated there. I think that the comparisons of our state with others is problematic. But for me, the position is, kind of starts off on the wrong foot. You need a vision of educational quality and then talk about how to fund it, but it seems to me that we're starting off with how to fund it without having a clear notion as to what constitutes quality. Quality can take different forms. It could be uniform for every, every school across Michigan. I think that's one reason why charter schools have not achieved their full potential, is because we've held them to the same standards in almost every respect as traditional public schools, and so we end up with parallel system rather than an alternative system. Secondly, there are factors that seem to be overlooked, like the sighting that, you know, over the years, Michigan's fourth grade students have scores have sunk compared to other states. Well, that's because other states raised their entry age to kindergarten by three months, and we continue with, with our kids being at age five, 20%, or rather, 5% younger than the kids of all the states that we're being compared with. Now, we've rectified that, this board has rectified that, but still, it comes as a surprise to several of our presenters that this was or could be a factor. They all want to, they all want to attribute the factor to something having to do with funding. And I think that's, that's the faulty assumption. You cannot make up the differences between students by funding. In some cases, it's impossible. In other cases, the right strategy might be appropriate, and that may or may not cost funding. But you have to come up with the strategy, the picture of quality first, and then how to fund it. Now, if we admit that there are different strategies that work for different students, if students are different, then obviously they'll benefit from different educational delivery systems. I personally believe Michigan will benefit from different curricular offerings as well. If we want to, if we want to support a diversity in public education offerings, we need to recognize that may not be compatible with all the quality standards that are sometimes advanced. It also suggests a funding that, some means of funding that will allow different organizations, different districts, different charter schools to implement different visions and be responsible for the differences in cost. So if one school does a lot of one-on-one work with, and every child has his own psychiatrist, well, then the extra cost for that professional attention needs to be not laid on the state, but on the, on that local school or local district to make its decisions how it wants to spend available resources, because resources are always by definition limited. And a final observation is, the larger, the larger percentage the education is of Michigan's entire budget, the more sensitive it becomes to economic ups and downs in the state. That's, that's an unavoidable corollary. As we advocate more and more education funding, it becomes more and more vulnerable to the economic shifts in the state. And since our expertise is in education and not in economics, I think we need to avoid making statements about road funding or what tax structure will encourage or inhibit business and so on and so forth, and then just confine ourselves to recommendations for what education needs, and avoid taking stands on areas that are outside of our competence. And that might, and that might include what is the best way to tax or structure funding. At least we need to be open to what other, others who have expertise specifically in revenue raising might have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Cassandra?
So I just wanted to, first of all, commend John for doing such a great job of pulling all of that information together into what is really a pretty concise document that outlines a number of issues. I think overall, it's pretty balanced. I think for each of us, there's something that we could point to in here that we would say, I feel very strongly about this, and then other things, not so much. But on a whole, I think it speaks to the range of issues that we're facing with public education today. And I just wanted to caution anyone who would see this document, not necessarily read it, but see it, and think, you know, the State Board of Education is just asking for more money for education. I don't think that's the case at all. I think what we're doing is we're asking for policies that allow us to spend the money we do spend wisely. And right now, not all of the policies in the state allow that to happen. So we continue to expand our infrastructure, for example, when we have fewer students. That does not allow us to utilize the funds that we do spend in perhaps the most appropriate manner. So I just want to say that I support the document, and I think overall, it took the information that we heard and it narrowed it down to some real reasonable recommendations.
Thanks, Cassandra. Dan?
So the, thanks. The document, of course, is imperfect, and I think probably everybody, John included, would describe it as such, the nature of such things. It's limited in scope, and so there are things that, that all of us care about that aren't included. For myself, I mean, I would use as an example, I believe strongly the need for policies like common enrollment systems across various school governance models. But this is only, we're only talking about financial policies here, and so things like that are not included. Individuals can and will disagree about elements of it, and I think that's entirely appropriate. The process was challenging, to the point that Eileen makes. It reminds me a little bit, actually, of legislative hearings, and sometimes we feel like legislative hearings were done well, and sometimes we feel like they weren't done well. And that's the nature of the beast with these things. And it does fail to probably take into account kind of human service elements of the equation, number of kids, you know, the extent of child poverty. I think that's a great point, Kathy, that frankly I had not thought about prior to your making that, that comment. All of that having been said, I will and am supportive of the statement, really for one fundamental issue, and that is, one fundamental reason, and that is because I think it's an effective provocation and necessary provocation around the issue. So school finance in Michigan, I would argue, is not effective. And while we might disagree about the extent of its ineffectiveness, and we might disagree about proposed solutions to it, my gut is that the overwhelming majority of folks around this table would agree that school finance policy in Michigan doesn't work effectively. That being the case, part of our job as the State Board of Education is to provoke that conversation in the legislature and in the executive branch. It's to get those folks to pay attention to the issue and have their own debate about it. And we, like all Michiganders, have to trust the process and hope that the debate will produce a better outcome. But our job is to provoke that debate. And this document does, I think, an effective job of provoking that debate, because it details the challenges that school districts face, charter and traditional. It offers enough suggestions, proposals, to be vulnerable, right? So we go first. The nature of a provocation is, let me throw my idea out there on the table and let everybody else take a shot at it. It's not going to be perfect, right? And it's not going to be what's ultimately adopted, it's simply to get the conversation Those suggestions include spending consistently, spending smarter, smarter choice in charter policy, which I agree with, and let's be clear that I am a choice and charter proponent, and fixes to proposal A. And I think it also adequately frames, I've been reminded a few times as we've gone through this conversation about the, I thought, really profound framing, and I don't remember who did it for us, but one of the presenters who shared kind of these four values that should guide this conversation around adequacy, equity, was it Phil Kearney? Yeah. Equity, I don't remember which ones I just said, but efficiency and effectiveness, I think were the other two. So I think the statement does, is worthy of support for that reason. Finally, I would say I'm really looking forward to the ongoing debate. Trust that it will be messy, as democracy and, you know, democratic debate always is, but faithful that we'll get to something better, and want to acknowledge and thank John for your extraordinary leadership through this process and guiding us through the process, whatever the outcome may be. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Dan. Michelle?
Yeah, this, I also support the document overall, and I think it was a, you know, it's like a landmine, you know, you're bound to upset somebody, but you've done, I think you've, the way you've focused on like common sense solutions and obvious problems, I think, I think it's a solid document, and I think it's a really good piece, and you're very, I appreciate your diplomacy, something I'm working on.
I think I'm going to give up on that.
Just one thing that, and I had voiced this before, is, you know, there's a few issues. One was with the reference to Mepsers, and I'm glad it's in there, it is a, it is a big problem, but I, to me, the source of why it's, you know, there's a lot of reasons why the cost has gotten out of control. And, you know, some people politicize it and frame it as, you know, teachers being selfish and getting this exorbitant pension, and they don't care about the kids getting classroom, money for the classroom, and I think that that's very disingenuous and very self-serving. But I think, you know, to look at the, again, the proliferation of charters, many of which are, my understanding is, are not allowed to be part of this system, and also the EAA as well as the changes to our, you know, for the new teachers coming in, that people are not contributing into that system, and it's not funded the way it was prior to proposal A, and it's, you know, and being demanded that the school districts pay a big chunk of the money that they're giving from the state to cover those costs. And I know the state covers a number of that, but, much of that, but, I mean, it's sort of a setup. And I know there are people gunning and really want to eliminate this pension program, and I would say that right now, it seems, I see the enrollment in our colleges and the teacher education programs going down. I see teachers wanting to leave as soon as they can, because it's such a demoralizing atmosphere. I see Detroit having a heck of a time recruiting. So when we talk about these highly paid teachers that need to be, you know, you know, somehow it's like they're getting something and not contributing enough, I take issue with that. So that's one point. And I do think, I agree strongly with what Kathy said, and I do think economics is tied into education, because if you, and the reason for this is, and I don't think we have to justify increases, because right now we have so many schools in deficit. I mean, there's, there is an obvious need for more funding, given that we're, have so many schools in deficit or facing deficit, and those, those economic issues means cuts in programming, cuts in larger class sizes, all kinds of things that affect education. So the finance, economics is education, they go hand in hand. And one of the things that we know, one of the few things that are very, very clear, is that smaller class sizes make a difference. And yet, this is not even part of the discussion, it's more about how to get people online and not have teachers teach, but have them facilitate a class. I think what, having experienced teachers in a, in a small classroom makes a difference and will, and can and doesn't improve achievement, and that's why a lot of people send their kids to private schools, because they can get these very small class sizes. And I think public school students deserve the same opportunities to have that sort of arrangement, especially if they're, have a long way to go, to make up for their economic situation. I also think economics matters, because we have, and the Mackinac Center has shown us that what is the highest correlation, higher than the teacher, higher than the experience, and again, what this OECD study has brought up, is it's not the teacher that's the strongest... and again, what this OECD study has brought up, is it's not the teacher that's the strongest influence on student achievement, it is the community that they come from and their economic status. And people want to kind of put that in the background, but, like I said, the Mackinac Center showed that there's a strong correlation, and the top to bottom, based on their test scores, as well as correlated with their economic status. So, I do think economics matters. I do think we need to take those, if we want to really improve, we've got to be cognizant of that. I'm almost done. And I was just, Jeffrey Canada, who many people love to, you know, say, you know, he's, all the great work he's done, the cost per child in his program, I'm told, is over 20,000 per child, because they provide wraparound services, and they provide intensive services that address the issues of poverty, that have such a strong impact, more than teachers, on their economic achievement. Finally, my husband and I just happened to be looking at the test scores, the NAEP scores and ACT scores in Florida and Tennessee, which everyone likes to pull out and saying, "Well, they're doing so much better." And he said, "Look, we are significantly ahead of them, and they are not achieving at any quick rate. They're so low that any little increase makes it look like they're really skyrocketing." We are, even, they are paying less and they're getting less. We, and so, I think it's good to keep in mind, even though people like to bring up Tennessee and Florida, we are significantly above them on these measures, ACT and NAEP scores. And I wonder, like, Florida is really not doing very well. I don't know why people keep using that as an example of what we should be like. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Lupe?
Okay. I concur with what everybody has said at the table. Finance and education go hand in hand. I truly appreciate the work that John has put together, and some of the things that came up in the discussion right now are, triggered something in my brain. Now, Dan says that this document will provoke conversation, it will provoke debate, it will initiate the conversation. And if we truly believe that, I think we have a good document, but we have to listen to what Eileen is saying, because I truly believe Eileen has political connections. They're in the majority, her party's in the majority, and not only in the majority, they're going to have lots more in the legislature than we're just exiting. She has the inside, she has the voice that they listen to, she has the relationships, she has the connection. And Eileen is recommending something to us that I don't think is far-fetched as to what we want to do, and she's recommending that we have something in the document that speaks to better student outcomes. So, I don't see that to be extraordinary and far-fetched as to what the document entails. So, how can we connect what Eileen is recommending that we can incorporate to this document and make it, make it so that this conversation that we're trying to strike in the legislature in this coming January does truly happen?
Good point. Thank you.
I just want to make one correction. I'm the one who passed out the OECD USB keys, and they are a summary of Andreas Schleicher, Andreas Schleicher of the Organization for Economic Cooperation Development, OECD's PISA talk at the Excel and Ed Summit, which was all about why teachers make a difference in student outcome. That was specifically the topic.
Thank you. Well, John, please.
So, appreciate everybody's comments. I think, like Dan, I would view this as an important responsibility of ours, which I think we've been working to execute. How do we, as a state board, draw out what are the major issues that are impacting achievement and outcomes? I think the whole document is predicated on certain aspects of our broken school finance system are affecting outcomes. And how do we draw out what those issues are, and how do we make some thoughtful recommendations of the direction of change in our policies, as Cassandra noted, that could help us get better outcomes, to start and encourage that conversation, and to provide some thoughtful input and recommendations in that conversation. Obviously, you know, I'm disappointed if it isn't something that we can, as a full board, endorse and say, "These are, on balance, the right issues and some of the right directions for change." Because it certainly was an effort to be, as I would say, as even-handed in its analysis and in its recommendations as one could be, and listening both to Eileen and everyone about even some of the facts and some of the recommendations. So, I don't know if it's possible to satisfy all of our board members, Lupe. I think that effort may be fruitless, because that effort has been made. Though, I think it's important, per Dan's suggestion, that we continue to spur attention and action on these important issues and on the directions of change that we must make. So, I would, and do so, certainly eager to not only be persuasive, but find as much common ground. As I said, there may be specific recommendations that are easier to find common ground on than others in this document, but we shouldn't be shy about articulating our best even-handed, thoughtful analysis of the direction of change that we need to advance in Michigan, and see how we can encourage that debate and conversation around those issues. So, I would certainly welcome a motion and a vote on this document as a starting point for encouraging discussion about, and spurring discussion about these important topics that we've spent considerable time trying to understand and make sense of.
So moved.
I would support the recommendations of the paper.
You taking the motion? You made a motion?
You made a motion already? Oh, okay.
Typically, you don't.
You're right.
Typically, it's an afternoon issue, but I think the board can do what it wants. You know, the board can waive and effect that process if you feel like you're ready, but also if you feel like it's more appropriate to...
I would certainly encourage, let's go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, while we were talking, did I miss a motion?
I did.
Dan moved. Moved. Supported by...
You made a motion to support the document as is?
And supported by, I'm sorry, I missed that. Kathleen?
Even though I have some questions...
Further discussion, Richard.
You can ask him now.
I guess I want to acknowledge John's particular effort to be inclusive here, and I think this document is very, very well put together, and I think nuanced very well. But at the very beginning, when the statement was made that our school funding model is broken, I dissented at that point, and I still hold a view. I think that there are, it's certainly worth a look at, and I think that there are a number of suggestions in this document that I would fully support, but I do not support the premise. And that's my reservations regarding our particular statement. So, I acknowledge...
That language is not, you're saying, in this current document, so maybe that's something to consider. Eileen, please.
And I also would like to reiterate that so much work has gone into this, it's just not complete. And if I were a dissertation advisor, I'd be saying, "This is a very, very good two-thirds effort, but the expertise of the department and the real expertise that this board and this department could have brought to this conversation, we're ignoring," which is, "How do you take a local-controlled state, put more money into education, and have different outcomes?" Because our outcomes don't match the money we're putting in right now.
Thank you. Dan, please.
It's my last meeting.
Talk as much as you want of Dan.
I saw that smile.
That's right.
Just as, so, I guess specifically, Eileen, I want to address your remarks, which are entirely fair. I would encourage the board to continue on down the path, right? So, provoking the public conversation does not mean kind of throwing the bomb and walking away.
No, this would be the beginning of the conversation.
It means to begin the conversation, right? And so, there is, I think, a tremendous opportunity for this board, for all of you, to do the last third of the work, to use your metaphor. And simply because it's my last meeting, I'm going to make the motion, or, you know, I've already made the motion, but am making that motion because I want a chance to be a part of the provocation. But I don't think that that means it has to be the end. And so, I wouldn't, don't create the false dichotomy, like, you can make them, we can all support the motion now, get it into the public sphere of conversation, and do the last third of work over the first half of next year to come up with something that is finally complete, that everybody can support.
Thank you, Dan. Any other discussion?
I agree with what Dan just said, I think it's important, we could frame it that way, that this, you want to start this...
And I think, knowing me and all of us, you know I commit to that kind of continuing improvement effort, seriously listening to each other and trying to work together.
This is the start, not the end.
So, I appreciate your support.
Okay. Then, may I call the vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Aye.
I think that was Eileen and Richard.
Well, I think it's unfortunate that...
Motion passes.
Turns out to be a partisan vote.
It's not partisan.
May I make two comments, and I don't often do this, I'll try not to, and I wanted to wait for the vote, but I, first of all, I think the civility and the discourse here is really important for other bodies to see. And even when there's disagreement, I mean, it just is missing in our society right now. So, I mean, I'm very proud to be associated with a board that does it this way. And then, the second thing, in terms of the provocation, I thought that was interesting the way Dan put it. I'm going to do more of this when I retire, seriously. I think more than maybe, I'm going to say some of these things because I don't, by not saying some of these, I don't think it's as clear on, frankly, the shackles that are on a state superintendent, to not inadvertently step on a board or vice versa. I try to stay in my lane, so I have some unique authorities I can use, and sometimes that creates tension, but where I'm going is that, I do plan to, I do believe this is a worthy cause. I do think that, I really appreciate the way Dan just said, "Let's do the next third, and after July 1, I would, hopefully, this is done before that, but I'd like to be part of that." And let me just tell if I, because you're likely to get, I mean, I don't know for sure, but everything being equal, since I'm fairly old, you're likely to get someone a little younger. And I may be the last one who's lived through a few of these. Literally, my last day as a local superintendent was the day that proposal A was passed. It was the last day of 1993, I was a teenage superintendent, as you know, at that time. And then, my first day as an ISD superintendent was January 1. And I had not intended to provoke, but to use this, I wrote, I wrote an article called "Confessions of a Rich District Administrator," which was intended for, to be inside our association. And it got out, and it caused, frankly, it caused some tension for a while, this was before December 31. It caused some tension with the board I was working with, because it seemed, on the surface, to be disloyal to the district I was in. But it was because we, when I first started there, we were a poor district. And then, overnight, we became a rich district because all these, if you know Farmington, Farmington Hills, we were the ninth biggest district at the time, all these world headquarters got built, along 275, along 96. And I thought, "This is just downright wrong." You know, that the happenstance of this, I could suddenly, together with the board, we were putting in technology, we were allowing class size, we, over time, made it a strategic decision and became the number-one teacher-paid group in the state because we had the resources. And yet, there was a little sliver of Farmington Hills. For people who know the area, there's many poorer areas in Farmington Hills, it's kind of a stereotype, it's not accurate. But there's one in particular that was in Clarenceville School District. And I went down to that community, and it's not even a major road, it's between Eight and Nine Mile Road, borders Detroit, and if you, that little road there, which was dirt ironically at the time, if you were on the north side of the road, you had all of these things available to you. If you were your friend's best friend across the street, you had nothing. So, where I'm going with this is, I really think John's work's been excellent, the board, and the provocation is a good way to think about it, because the way you were intently listening to each other, I think if the legislature will do the same thing, that last third will be excellent. And, you know, if you look at, one of the things proposal A did cure, it's old now, it's 20 years old, but it did start to say, "This is just wrong that you keep increasing the difference between these districts." That's been one of the real positives that came from it. But it is 20 years later. I mean, the world has changed so dramatically, so I would think there is room for improvement on this. And I thought, if I could just say, I thought the common theme that I heard John started out with, and I think everyone's, it was, it's, I thought you acknowledged right out of the block, it's smarter spending. So, that's, is that the part everyone can kind of rally around, is the smarter spending, and maybe the same way that this, this, really immoral thing where richer districts are getting richer and richer, and poorer were going this way, got resolved, maybe that that piece can get resolved. Because I would, speaking on behalf of the department, I would say, most of our work on Fridays at Sups Group is trying to target in with some of the tools we have on how you make, how you get to outcomes within what we have. So, we would like to be a full partner in that, and I really appreciate the discussion that was had, and thank you for that. Okay, we're going to move on now to, since it's Dan's last meeting, and I gave him my favorite tie, I want to say that we wanted to make sure this, this item was on the agenda before Dan left, because he specifically asked for some follow-up and didn't want him to have to trudge back here in January to hear it. So, joining me at the table will be Teresa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent, Linda Forward, excellent Director of Education Improvement Innovation, Tom Howell, who is a full partner with us from SEPI. And to just set the stage, this is the presentation on Technology Readiness Infrastructure. It's the Grant Data Integration Activity. October meeting, you heard about the Technology Readiness Infrastructure Grant, what we call the TRIG Initiative. And one of the activities of the grant focuses on the development of data hubs and the use of data, help the classroom teacher make good decisions about how to support all of the students that he or she works with daily, and in an individualized way. So, today, our folks are here to build on that, and Dan, we not only honored you earlier and well later, but we also wanted to make sure that you, we did this on your watch.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, board members, and thank you for having us here today to talk about something that we are really excited about here. And I want to acknowledge, as Mike said, acknowledge the collaboration with SEPI on this and many other topics. It's a great partnership across agencies to work to provide data to our schools, our districts, and now, what the exciting part here is, it really gives us a foray into data to teachers, data to classrooms, data for instruction, which is really where my passion has always lain, is that the right use of that word? Lies, my passion lies, is how do we get this data and use it for our decision-making, really at that instructional level, and then at other levels as well. But it's also the most difficult level to reach into, that classroom level, because here in Lansing, how do we get to classrooms all around this state? So, there's a lot of pieces to it. Like, like the superintendent alluded to, this is some, we've been trying to make a run at this activity, at this task through our TRIG grant money. And so, Linda and Tom are going to take us through where we're at, where we're trying to go. But like I said, this, this project is really exciting to us because it helps us to think about how we get data closer to where students are for their, for use for their instruction. So, Linda?
Thank you. Good morning, and I want to just spend a minute acknowledging not only Tom's work, but Don Daly from KRSI, who, as you remember, when we presented the whole TRIG plan, we had a variety of ISDs who were taking leads on different activities, and Don is the lead on this activity, and so, we are grateful to him and all the work he does. Tom's the guy I work with most closely every day, so we'll take you through this. Just a reminder, the TRIG grant was awarded by the legislature to prepare schools for online assessment. We've had three years of funding, the first two were for $50 million each, and last year, the current working year, we have 41.5 million. We have seven statewide activities, and the data integration project is one of them. And it's designed to streamline the use of educational information and to get it, get it into a common data format and common solutions. We're hoping, and our goal is to have this help Michigan educators have data at their fingertips, so that... fingertips, so that teachers can take a look at information about children, and make decisions about the strategies, and the innovations that they may need in order to better meet the needs of each child. And so, that's my goal at the level where I work, with curriculum and instruction and that kind of thing. Tom's the data guy, though, so I'm gonna turn this over to him to help you see how we're going to make all this happen, because it is phenomenal.
All right. Just a little bit more context, the department has provided a great deal of leadership, and more of an integrated approach to making information available, both within the state for policymaking decisions, and locally, to harvest and use the appropriate information, put it in a context that's more meaningful to teachers and educators throughout the system. So, I really enjoy working with them, it gives us a good opportunity at SEPI to get outside of the compliance box, and spend a little bit more time working on creative solutions that actually improve the instructional opportunities statewide. Little bit of other context, there was legislative interest in moving to common systems, that was a conversation back in school year 2013, with a locally-controlled state and a great deal of diversity needed in the education space to bring the right resources to bear on education. I think that the TRIG project and the ISDs really brought a good solution together through this particular activity, to really utilize the services and systems in place in schools in a, in a smarter way that brings some integration of services together, while still allowing a little bit of variation in the management information space. So, the concept of this project really is to stay focused on what the districts have in place, and how that can be leveraged. You'll see a series of systems here, student information systems, special ed systems, food services, warehousing, transportation, that's five of maybe 14 systems we could rattle off right now, that are often used at the local level to manage the operations of a district. There's data collected in each one of these systems. Sometimes it's redundant data, so student information is gathered in each one of these five systems. That is very redundant work, it's prone to maybe some inequality or inaccuracy across systems. This project itself really is focused on helping those systems work together in a more streamlined fashion, so that we can eliminate some of the redundancy that's taking place right now. Also, a known challenge is getting access to the right information at the right time, you know, do I have to go to the warehouse to find information about a student that's in front of me today? That's a challenge, because often, the information that you might need isn't in the warehouse, it might be in the student information system, it might be in the transportation system. So the hub also brings an opportunity to bring that data together, and provide it back out in a meaningful way. The solution proposed by the ISDs through the TRIG project, and worked on and supported by the department and SEPI, really is a hub approach. So recognizing the same five systems from our example, the hub would build the translation or the crosswalk between each of those local systems and the central hub. So again, the hub is focused on bringing data quality, and reducing burden on our districts in the management of their information resources. This method really allows the two-way exchange of information, so between the hub and back out to the district, so you have opportunity then to leverage information that you've already provided into the system, pull it back up into a local system, based on the connections that the ISDs are building. One of the challenges this also helps is validating the accuracy of information, ensuring consistency across those various data silos. How does this scale out statewide? It's an awfully big initiative to try to bring together almost 900 locally-controlled, locally-operated school districts, public school academies, and intermediate school districts. The TRIG regions are broke up into five portions of the state, the hub project selected, they self-selected which of the five ISDs would actually serve as hosts for each of the hubs. So you see, it's a pretty diverse group, we've got folks way up there in copper country, we've got folks down in Kalamazoo, and as far east is, looks like Macomb. So, we've got a pretty cross, good cross-section of ISDs participating, and really offering up services to support the greater good. I think Linda probably took you through the ISD regions before, but basically, by working in regions, we're able to leverage the knowledge of the systems and supports that are already in place, and work a little bit more efficiently toward moving that information to the centralized hub. So how does this work? All right. We started with a pilot, Kalamazoo, RISA, and Don Daly, who's here with us today, volunteered to be that pilot. So they were the first ones to really set up that central hub, get the architecture and the infrastructure in place to start the work. They've been coordinating the overall conversation across the regions and across the ISD partners. They have worked with each of the regions to select an additional, an initial pilot group. So you see Waterford, Luddington, Wyoming Schools, Sioux St. Marie, and Marion Springs as examples of some of the pilot groups that are working with the pilot hub. And each of them is represented by a set of systems that help us move toward the diversity that exists across the state. So if you look at the color key, it's better than our black and white copies here, you've got student information systems, several of them represented in this pilot aspect of the project, you've got special ed systems, data warehouses, food services, and transportation systems represented. Now moving, as you see from this example, there are so many different systems in play already, how in the world can we talk to each other when we're using different language? Kind of like a vocabulary translator online, the hub approach allows us to build this highway between these local systems and the hub in a common way. So the hub approach really relies on us moving toward the use of a common exchange format, and putting common, shared standards together. So the ISDs are working very closely with the state, to really come up with that standard that will be used to move information. So when we talk about, let's just say, a student's last name, we've defined exactly what that looks like, what type of data language we use to move that information, whether you can use a hyphen, or special characters, et cetera, that becomes very important in a data conversation. All right. There are interactions at the local level that probably happen now, sometimes over the phone, sometimes via email requests, but with a hub approach, a district, and in this example, Niles Community Schools, could request information from the hub. What they would do is electronically request, go into the hub system and request information, and perhaps they think they need to get that from Marion Springs, so they send the request off to Marion Springs. Marion Springs does not have what they need, so they move on to the next player electronically in the hub. It makes it a much more efficient process, we're not sending emails, we're not making phone calls, we're actually letting the technology do its work. Requests for information have to be authorized, so I don't, that is not to say that Niles just gets to ask to see what's in the data store that's set up for Duwajiak, that wouldn't be appropriate. They're allowed to ping a system and find out if information exists, Duwajiak has control over whether or not that data may be released. That's required by the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, it's something we've kept in the forefront of all the work we do on the project. All right, we, we talked at the beginning about setting up five hubs, so if Duwajiak or a particular school district is in one single hub, how do they get information from another? So in your example, working from the top to the bottom, we've got hubs interacting with each other. So at the point that we know a student that we're looking for in a particular hub is not contained within our, our regional configuration, the hubs have opportunity now to go to the next hub, and, and put in that same request to say, hey, I've got this new student enrolling in front of me, I need to understand, within the context of their former education services, the right information, so the day they show up, I am able to start tailoring an education plan to serve that student. It is a critical missing piece in the way districts are able to interact with each other now, and with the way the state interacts with our districts. So this is really a smart use of technology, rather small investment, to move in a much more efficient manner toward managing outcomes, or services that need to be delivered to a student in the first day they walk into the district, not in the third, or fourth, or sixth month. All right, again, each of those requests would have to be authorized, so even though the system will be able to find a student, perhaps in another region, that region and the district that owns that student's record still has to authorize the release of that information, and, and that is simply a legal issue that we will always have to work within as we manage these matters. All right, from a timeline perspective, we're really piloting right now, Don and the team has worked very hard to get that first initial hub in place, they've got a good working system, they've got a fair amount of information already loaded and interacting, we've got some sample dashboards and things that are starting to emerge, to get a good flavor of the cross-section of information that has become available through the really conceptual project that we're piloting at the moment. By June of this year, so the end of the school year, the target for the TRIG team is to get 20% of the participating districts into each of the data hubs across the state. We think it's a, a good target, I don't think it's overly aggressive, 90% of the districts in the state are working within the systems that we've already been working toward building the connectors for. So it's important to note that this 20% would only include those that actually utilize the services and systems that we're already working to build the connectors for. Of course, the beginning of the next school year, of course, we're gonna roll this out statewide, with hopes of getting as near to that 90% saturation coverage we can get in the next school year. It is anticipated that at the end of the next school year, the hubs are working fairly close with SEPI, and probably with other partners within the Department of Education, to work on some of those data interchanges between the hub, then, and the state. One of the challenges, of course, that we hear from our schools is, you know, the state needs to know a lot of information about the services, so they can make good policy decisions and programming decisions, but it takes a lot of effort for them to provide that information. The hub approach allows them not only to be more efficient about the way they leverage and use information, and exchange it with each other, it also affords them opportunity to work on perfecting, and allowing the technology to help move that information up to the state. So we'll begin working on those projects probably the end of, well, we'll be working on that over the course of the next year. All right, how is student data being handled? So, we all know data is owned by the local school district, those providing education services are the ones that own the data. There are data hosting agreements that have been worked out, those agreements specify what can be done within the hub, and how that data can be exchanged across the districts. It addresses things about security, protection of information, encryption rules, permissions necessary for the flow of data, and what rights, the district retains in terms of how they can integrate that into the system, or even turn off the flow of information if they believe it's in their best interest. Data security and privacy is a big part of our conversations and our work. Following, I think, the work of the governor, who requires that the state ensure that all data is encrypted in transit and at rest, the, the TRIG project is following the same methodology. So, we won't get into the technical terms up there, but whether it's a file transfer protocol, or connection between servers, we use encryption to make sure that the data, as it moves, is, is secure and safe, and that if it were to be hacked, we've all watched the Sony thing unfold, it's encrypted information, so it's not as simple as hacking into a system and taking a look at what's there, it's encrypted, so it's protected with another layer of protection. And of course, we use security and passwords, and we all know how hard that is sometimes to keep track of all the passwords we have, but this uses a strong password security as well, to make sure that we have yet another layer of security for our students' records.
One, two, three, four, isn't good to have on all your...
Yeah, that's probably not a best practice, Mike, but I'll leave that to you. This system in particular would require something a little bit more advanced. Again, the data hosting security agreements do lay out what districts, what information exists to assure the district that this is being done in a very secure manner. We do require that anyone that interacts with the system have FERPA awareness training. You'd be surprised what people don't understand about FERPA, and what it does allow and doesn't allow, and mostly on the doesn't allow side, is where I think folks learn, as they go through that training and awareness exercise. Another big security and privacy issue for the ISDs and the local districts was that this data be stored separately, district by district. So the data hubs are set up in a way that allows Duwajiak's data to be secure within its own table, and, let's say, Lansing's data to reside in its own portion of the partitioned databases. So, we're not meshing and mingling data in the hubs, we're appropriately setting it up so that it can be more efficiently used across data silos. What is the progress in the state? We talked about data integration being one of the goals, and system integration being a goal. Well, back in 2013, when the project started, there were 26 student information systems in play across the state. Within those 26 systems, there were approximately 300 implementations of those systems. So you see, as you move down through the system, or out through the system, it gets more and more complex, because we all work and manage information a little bit differently. The TRIG team, through their technology readiness survey, really saw movement in the right direction, were managing down to 14 student information systems locally, back in 2013, 14. And as of this year's survey, we're really down to using 10 student information systems across the state. In those 10 student information systems, we've got 93% of the districts and 93% of the students covered by those really streamlined, higher-powered student information systems that exist out there. The project right now is focused on five of those systems. We've made significant progress, the TRIG team's done a fantastic job working with the vendor community, to engage them, they've provided some free services to the districts and to the state. We've also paid for some services, to ensure that everyone that's participating in this pilot is able to have those translation pieces built into our system, so it'll be successful.
So I'd like to take a minute, as we wrap up, and call out two things, I appreciate very much the presentation from Tom and Linda, on the, what this really provides us is the infrastructure, right? Because think about it from a teacher's perspective, if a teacher, we're trying to support all of our, our instructors, and being able to use multi-tiered systems of support concept, which is where you provide high-quality core instruction to all students, and then you regularly diagnose, and where students are falling behind, you intervene. So to do that, you need data at your fingertips, right? You need your screener data, you need their assessment data, you need some information, you need all this information from pieces, maybe do they have an IEP? For a teacher right now, this is like, pretty hard to get to, but you can't just put all that data in an Excel spreadsheet and give it to them. You need a rather robust infrastructure here, that Tom's describing, with security and easy-to-use displays and things like that. So this project really gives us the backbone that we need to be able to think about how you integrate data from those local systems, and from the state data, and give it back to people in a, in a more usable way. The other thing I wanted to kind of call out, that I think is unique about this approach, is that it's not all held at the state level, that it's held at the regional hub level. And there's interface with the state, but that it's not always the most efficient thing to send all the information up to us, and then have it come back down. Some of it needs to come up to us for reporting, for various purposes, but there's a lot of information that locals collect, that they can use more, more appropriately at the local level, but again, with as many information systems, every district needing to build their own screens and their own vendors, this is a big duplication of effort. So this project gives us the, the core, and the, the foundation on which to build something where we actually make more efficient use of our data in multiple systems, and integrate it for the decision-makers. So, just as a, as a less technical person, wanted to call out what I hear as the most exciting parts of this for all of you. I think this, good, Mike?
Okay, great, thank you. Richard, you were up first, I saw your hand.
Yeah. Do non-public schools or non-public school students plug into this system, or will they eventually?
The answer is, it's possible, but it's not something that's on the immediate radar. We're, we're working with public taxpayer dollars and public services, so our initial focus has been on public education.
If, if we saw this as a service to the student, as opposed to the, the school, then I would, I would think that that would be a benefit to our, our homeschool and others, because many of these non-public education students eventually interface, come in and out of the, the public school system in any case, so.
Good question.
Dan?
Yes, sir.
That actually gets to one of my questions, of which there are three.
You don't want me to force you?
I'll recue, I'll recue myself up. So... So, I think I asked this before around ownership of data. So the district owns the data. Is there a particular reason that families don't own the data or that students don't own the data? What's the, like, is there a, what's the, do you happen to know what the reason is behind that? Or is it just an accident of history? Or is there a, like, is there a policy reason for that decision?
Under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, the family has the right to review and require correction of information about their student. So, ownership isn't something that FERPA really dictates, but it does suggest if you deliver education services, so if you are the recognized delivery vehicle for education services, you have an ownership responsibility or stakeholder responsibility over the information supporting those educational services. So FERPA is the rule that guides what we consider to be ownership in the delivery of education services. Does that help you? I'm sorry.
I get that FERPA is the law. I'm just wondering what the policy rationale is behind it. And I'm almost wondering if this is, if it isn't a fiduciary, I just need to go look at the law, but I'm wondering if it isn't almost a fiduciary obligation that FERPA imposes. Like, this still doesn't answer the question of who owns the data and why.
Yeah, ultimately, the parent does have the right to the information and they have the right to ensure that it's used privately for further delivery of education services until the student's emancipated and is on their own.
I think, Dan, too, that if you think back and get out of the technology world and you go back to the file drawers upon file drawers of CA60s sitting somewhere, who owned that CA60? The parent had a right to look at it, but it was the property of the school. It had been put together by, you know, by teachers for that student over the years. And so I think a lot, and I know that a lot of FERPA was put in place way back when that's what we were working with, and how would you utilize those records? So, it has a long history of belonging to the school. It's not through the current...
Dan, I don't think it's a new question. If you maybe inferred what you would hope it would do, maybe, and maybe then we can answer it that way. Is there an inference about if the family owned, then one could...
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'm not sure where I'm headed with it.
Okay.
Craig's got the answer then.
Well, if you go to a doc and the doc orders a chest X-ray, you own the chest X-ray. And if you want a second opinion or if you want to shop it elsewhere, you go to the doctor's office, scoop it up, and take it with you. And it's an analogy I would apply. You own and operate, you own the chest X-ray. Why wouldn't the parent or the student own the data?
Right. And according to FERPA, they do have the right to review what is in that package, but it's not, they, FERPA does not get to ownership.
But then, take the chest X-ray. Oh my, Linda gets to look at her chest X-ray, but it goes right back to the clinic.
I get that there are competing priorities here, right? I mean, public dollars are being used to finance all of this, so maybe it should be completely owned by the public institution. At the same time, I mean, I think FERPA recognizes, like, there are, these are intensely private kind of pieces of information, right? And so there's some ethical, kind of, not only ethical, moral obligation to guard it carefully, but perhaps an ethical and moral obligation to acknowledge that because the data's about you, actually, maybe you should own it. I'm not sure where it all goes. I just, I just wonder if we shouldn't, at some point, get to the, get to that conversation.
Joseph seems to have a...
It's very similar to what you were saying, Dan. I think the difference is that public tax dollars are being spent to create the records and they are a, they're something that are used by the public schools. They are used by the state for policy analysis, policy development purposes, and so on. But the FERPA does try to balance that right by making sure that they are used appropriately, that they're privacy protected and so on, but it is paid for by public tax dollars.
Let's continue after, I think it was Eileen, Michelle, Richard.
I, too, like Dan. I'm taking up Dan's mantle. You know, how many questions can I figure out how I ask in one sentence? I'm noodling around the costs of this activity and I'm thinking about when the autism study, MSU did the autism study, how the department could not identify where special ed students were until January or February because of the way the data was siloed and the way it was collected. And I'm wondering, of the 7 percent, the children who are not in this population, whether they will be at some point or whether that's a FERPA issue.
The percentage not yet covered, it is our hope to get all of them in, and that's our goal, is to have everybody under the 10. Actually, get down to five would be our ideal, so yes.
That's one. Do you know what the cost of this activity was?
Our first-year budget was a billion dollars. Second-year budget was a million, and then we allocated $2 million for next year.
And I just want to say that sainthood is not too little to give these people because they are very special minds, like Joseph Sanders, that think that this is a jigsaw puzzle. To me, it is something that I can't imagine anybody ever wanting to tackle. So, thank you so much because solving this is huge. And I don't know whether the department will get, I don't know what it will take for the department to get better to use data that is more retrievable for non-FERPA issues, but that's a very important thing for outsiders to understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, please.
I just had some questions about, do you foresee being able to hub with larger state agencies like the Department of Human Services? Because, you know, we're working with different groups who want to be able to track and identify kids in foster care, for instance, and make sure their needs are addressed. And they, there's, I guess, some models in other states where they, different agencies will combine information to give a fuller picture of the student to provide services.
We do that at the state level already. We do work with the Department of Human Services to identify students in foster care, students that are receiving SNAP or TANF services through a household. We are able to match them up back with the school districts. We return that information to them so additional services that they are entitled to can be offered freely as well. So we are doing that currently.
But it wouldn't be necessarily in the hub. It's in a separate sort of a system that you use?
Right, it would be a system.
And you are identifying foster care and giving that back?
We are.
Okay, because, was that something recent?
It's been the last couple of years.
Okay, I know there's quite a few people that have been working on sort of getting a better handle on that.
We provide bi-weekly reports back through the Michigan Student Data System out to the district so they have a near-real-time understanding of the needs of their students as they emerge through our social services programs.
So they wanted to get an aggregate of, like, in an ISD or in a larger area, not just in the district, they should go to SEPI and they can get that data?
Well, they don't have to come to us. We automatically do that through our system interchanges with the local districts and they just simply go in and accept the information that we provide to them.
Can I ask who you mean by "they"?
The group of people that I'm working, you know, the advisory group for TIP.
So if the advisory group needed information on aggregate numbers of students in those situations...
Right, and they've been working with people from DHS and they've been trying to figure out how to get the, access this data. And when I've been at these meetings, it seems like they're under the impression that they cannot access the data.
Right, so we've had meetings with Department of Human Services foster care folks.
Right.
Some recent legal interpretations have cleared the way for working toward a set of student-based information that can be made available under the law to a foster care worker or a worker that's dealing with an emergency crisis situation where family intervention has become necessary by the state. And we are working through the process of creating those data structures to provide that information efficiently.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Richard?
My question's been answered.
Okay. Craig, were you, did your hand go up earlier?
Yeah.
Yes.
The alignment with the governor's priority regions. Is it in alignment?
What was the question, Craig?
Alignment with the governor's priority.
We have 10 regions, and the governor's trying to get all state departments to organize within those 10 regions.
We tried to do that years ago.
Yeah, I know.
Trying to do now. Yeah, we come up with different regions.
But previous administrations never used dollars as incentives.
So, I think, I think that's an excellent question, Craig, and it is something that we are working on at the department here in general is getting. So we've been regionalizing services for a while, a lot of variety of things. And so, trying to get aligned with the 10 prosperity regions is something we're doing in a number of ways, including here. So, these somewhat co-developed at the, you know, at the time the governor was rolling out the prosperity regions, these regions were coming along, but the process is underway to get these aligned with the regions. Do you want to say more about it or is just that we're working on it?
Thanks.
It is on the radar.
And if the state superintendent or the board was given direct authority, you could probably line up ISDs and everything pretty quickly, too. Especially if it's one leaving anyway, so. That was meant to be half funny for the ISD people back there, but there's no... Dan, back to Dan on the queue.
They didn't really laugh.
No, they're, I'm not touching that one anymore, it was actually...
Michelle, great question. Tom, I'm actually just to follow up on Michelle's question. Is there, is there a time, do you foresee aggregate information about those kids being available to the public at any point in time or just kind of available to a DHS social worker?
We are talking about the types of aggregates that Department of Human Services might want to leverage as they convey information to the public about the... There's not internal intention at SEPI to create reports around that field of information, but it's certainly possible. We can group it because we know which students are receiving these critical services.
And this is where the, just wanted to take a minute to call out the partnership with SEPI is so fruitful for the department is we drive what kind of reports they create. So, when we have a policy need or we ask, they're very, very responsive to what we need. So in this case, I think Tom's already had the discussions with DHS, but again, if this escalates as a need, a report that needs to happen, that's one of the services that SEPI provides with the education data. And they've also done a great job of doing these cross-agency connections, which are no easy feat. You know, it's hard to share data within one community or department, and then you start sharing cross-department and it becomes very challenging. So, Tom leverages a lot of those conversations and we appreciate that because it gives us a richer data system, so.
That's great. I'm sorry.
No, well, Kathy and then...
Actually, following up, so my own question, sorry. You know what, just a kudos. Like, so, I'm just, I'm harkening back to our conversation last month about students in, who require special education services and how poignant that was and powerful it was. And there are a host of challenges in that world, one of which, I'm sure, is the, is access to information about those, that students' needs when a new student shows up who does need services. And the notion that kind of this really, you know, hard-to-understand kind of translation of databases across the state is happening behind the scenes and, God willing, in two years' time, we'll have something like 90 percent of kids able, like, their information able to be translated quickly so that when that child shows up who does have special needs, the student and staff at that school, or the staff, rather, at that school will be able to see it immediately. That's tremendous. I mean, just, like, there's this notion sometimes that bureaucracy is bad, and this is an instance, I think, where kind of bureaucratic work gets renewed, right? Right, it improves the ability of administrators, staff, schools to deliver great outcomes for kids. And I just want to acknowledge that and thank you for it.
Murs Congwer, you got that right. This is, shout out for, there are times. Kathleen?
I was just going to say something like that. The whole thing is so complex and so complicated that to try to simplify it and put together all these hundreds of different systems is just amazing. So I, it's supposed to be helpful to teachers, which will be a big asset. So I hope everybody can understand it. Well, they don't have to understand it, they just have to know how to use it. Right. That's not quite as hard. I hope. I hope.
Well, thank you all, this is excellent. And Dan, with your emeritus status, you don't need to go to public participation next time if you want to keep following up on this. Tom would take your call. So, thanks, guys. And two things, can I, not, not on this item, so you're good. Craig wasn't here earlier, and I do want to say that we're going to miss him at this table. This is a person I've known for 20 years, and whether you agree on every political position or not, particularly, I thought, his work at Public Sector that we used very often in different places I've been, all the way from Farmington to Wayne Rees to MAS A. It's just been excellent and thoughtful. And I know he's, he got strong-armed into even doing this probably for the period of time, but I think you've added great insights and I didn't want to not acknowledge that here, Craig. We're really appreciative of that.
I get paid to do this, I'm like the rusty members of the corps.
Yeah, but you didn't have to do it.
I'd like to make a motion that she can't leave.
There we go.
My wife, Janice, will veto.
She will sign the bill.
Appreciate your service, all the way back to Governor Milka.
Yes, absolutely.
So, thank you, sir. And Melanie, I know you have some childcare issues. Did you want to maybe jump ahead and do your report with that John suggested? Okay.
I appreciate your flexibility and 'tis the season of virus and illness. I'll need to get my children off the bus by four, so. So, one of the things I've enjoyed doing this year is working with students in college. And sometimes that's students that are going into teaching and sometimes that's students that are still deciding on what their future will be. So I got to speak to students at Oakland University for an organization called CASA and was part of their career day along with Judge Diane DiAgostini and a couple others, which was a great experience. I talked a little bit about the different avenues or academic avenues that I presented in, and one of them is mastering math facts. So I have felt for a long time that this is a missing component to a lot of the resources we're given for the standards. And so, this is a fact fluency presentation that provides all the resources and materials that a teacher would need to differentiate that instruction and that mastery for students. So it takes each set, you know, let's say, times fours, and it breaks it down into, into those sets so that students can focus on one set at a time rather than trying to master all of the facts at once. And students can move through that at their own pace and, you know, really take ownership in that and setting goals. So that's something I've been happy to share with teachers across the state. And this last one was at Pleasant Lake Elementary School, which is part of the Wild Lake schools. I'm very interested in learning more about charter schools this year. It's something that's different for me. So I did get to visit Invest Grace Middle and Elementary School, which is a charter in Hazel Park. And actually, the, I don't want to say principal because I believe he calls himself an administrator, but he's also a member of Teach, Teachers Educating and Creating Hope. And here in the center is Anita Kandja. She's a principal of Moon Lake and Wild Lake, and she's also part of the Teach group. So it was a nice way for three different types of educators to come together and learn about what each other are doing. So that was a great experience as well. I began with the Michigan Educator Voice Fellowship, and we had a training at the Crown Plaza Hotel in Lansing a few weeks ago. And it's about 50 educators from across the state who have been selected to learn more about policy, social media, public relations, and really trying to amplify the educator voice, which is, you know, what I'm all about. So it was a great experience and the beauty of it was I had connected with several of these teachers already through Twitter and through the MISH Ed Twitter group. And so, it was a great way to kind of take those virtual connections that we've made and bring them into real life.
Melanie, what's the night and time they typically have their... Melanie, what's the, the night and time they typically have their interaction on MISH Ed?
I believe MISH Ed is Wednesday nights. It's either 8:30 or 9:00, but I've been involved in several, so I mix up the times, but, and actually, I'll show you a slide coming up where there's a student from Kent ISD who's actually gotten involved in the MISH Ed chat, and is sharing the student perspective, which is something I hadn't really thought about. I think so much about teacher perspective and teacher voice, I thought it was great for her to get involved with the student voice. So, the power of Twitter just keeps, just keeps growing, and I see so much value in it.
If I could just mention, I didn't, I've listened in a few times, I didn't weigh in yet, because I didn't want to kind of take it in a different direction, but it's really a tremendous way to see mostly teachers now, but apparently opening to students, and the way they're thinking about current issues live, and interacting with each other. And so, hashtag MISH Ed, and get in on that timeline, and it's just fascinating.
Yeah, I had, I had a couple teachers ask me, you know, who are just starting to learn about Twitter, ask what the hashtag is for, and the best way I can explain it is it really just connects a conversation. So, anybody who's interested in, in being part of that MISH Ed conversation would search for that hashtag. If there's a conversation on bullying, you can be part of that. If there's a conversation on middle school administration, you can weigh in on that. So, the hashtag is really just bringing those conversations together in a common way. So, 21st century learning is another thing that I'm really interested in learning more about this year, and so, I visited, along with my principal, Phil Pittman, Hillel Elementary in Farmington Hills, and they just revamped their entire, well, actually, a large portion of their school to create more of a 21st century learning environment. So, you can see from the pictures that it's about open spaces, inviting environment, and allowing students to be comfortable and learn in different ways that are comfortable for them. So, this is one of their congregation areas, this is their cafeteria, which you can see the furniture is much more inviting and much more comfortable and relaxed. You know, they have this type of area here, which is also inviting, and then just different ways for students to interact through the day. It was fascinating, and it was very, very similar to a school I saw in Novi, Novi Woods Elementary, and the furniture was so similar that I happened to ask who the manufacturer was, and it was the same, which happens to be the husband of a teacher in Novi Woods. So, I thought that connection was great, and this is something I'm really moving towards as I think about heading back to my own classroom and getting rid of desks completely, and just creating a more natural environment for the kids. They also had something called a Makerspace, which I know that there's a, a movement behind, but this was a place where kids could go to make, and to make anything that they wished, or anything that had to do with what they were learning at the time. So, I saw different, you know, things that had to do with architecture and engineering. There was a lot of math involved. This boy here in particular was doing a project on, I think, World War II, and he designed this, created it, you know, did all the measurements, dimensions, and then created this piece that went along with his studies. So, I was fascinated by this, you know, as a mom myself, I have a daughter who's in third grade, she would spend all day in there if she could, because that's what she does. She goes in her room, and she creates and she makes. So, this is something that we're interested in moving towards as well. I've been in touch with people from Michigan Virtual University a few times this year, and recently, I got to go there and do an interview about, you know, topics on blended learning, teacher leadership, and even bullying, as we got to speak about. But this organization is really trying to help teachers and schools move into that 21st century learning environment. I had the pleasure of attending the Network of Michigan Educators banquet, where Superintendent Flanagan was our keynote speaker and did a wonderful job. And unfortunately, I don't have any pictures with him, because other people were taking them, and I haven't gotten my hands on those yet. But a few highlights, this is another teacher from Wild Lake, who is awarded for having his National Board Certification renewed, that is Michael Weiskopf. You'll see some familiar faces here, that is Garia Boode, last year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, and also Matenga Regatz. I forget what year, I think maybe 2012, but that was my first time meeting her in person, so that was exciting. And this was actually my favorite part, these teachers up here are called Teachers of Promise, and these are, these are students in teacher preparation programs from different universities, Eastern Michigan, I believe Oakland University and University of Michigan, and they were selected by their department as being Teachers of Promise, and were invited to this banquet to be recognized. So, I thought that was great, to be able to mentor them, and, you know, hopefully continue a relationship with them as they move towards this profession. The day after the banquet was the Michigan Innovative Schools Conference, and this is where I got to see a presentation about project-based learning by faculty and students of Kent Innovation High, which is a very different type of learning environment. And, you know, it was great that they brought students in, again, to hear that student voice, and we really just heard stories about how the project-based learning changed their way of thinking, so these may be students that didn't fit into traditional type of schooling, and how this impacted them, and so many great projects that they've done, and different outcomes that, that were very impressive to me, and then the way that the students spoke about those were powerful as well. And this is a student right here, I believe her name is Emmy, and she's the one who's gotten involved in MISH Ed, and knew more teachers at that conference than even I did, because she's reached out so much. So, I thought that was impressive as well. But I, I look forward to seeing this school in action. They're hosting a conference called Nova Now in, I believe it's March, and we get to go and see how their school works. So, I look forward to learning from that. I visited Harrison High School in Farmington Hills. One of the teachers there is, I have a connection to, through my principal, is my principal's wife, and she's in an interesting role this year, which is a halftime teacher and halftime instructional coach. So, as I'm thinking about the two different worlds that I've been in, which is, you know, full-time classroom teacher without much opportunity to kind of reach out and expand, to this year, being outside of the classroom and having tons of opportunities to work with other adults, really thinking about ways that we can marry the two and provide those opportunities without having to stay out of the classroom, because that's where so many teachers want to be. So, I was interested in how that worked, and while I was there, I got to see some great components of their school. They do have a full, complete auto shop and program where students can become licensed before they graduate high school. This was an amazing art piece that was made out of Starbucks cups. So, I don't know how closely you can see it, but these are all Starbucks cups, and, you know, it was really just kind of a piece about that part of our life and how it impacts us. Unfortunately, when she went to, to, to get these materials from Starbucks and asked for them, they charged her full coffee prices for these cups. So, I was so surprised with that, but she was able to get that back. But I was very, very moved by this piece, I found it very powerful. They have some different initiatives where they're trying to move, you know, away from teacher lecture-based classrooms and more to, you know, teacher facilitated learning environments. I got to see an acting class in action, and then also to see, you know, what an AP English Literature class looks like. So, from an elementary perspective, it was so interesting to see, you know, what high school life is and how the students interact similarly to the, to the way that they might in third grade, and also drastically different.
As a former superintendent there, I appreciate your helping reduce the image that Harrison's just a football factory. They actually are a highly academic place, but it kind of has overwhelmed their reputation.
You know, I was so impressed by the things that were happening. There was one student who had written a piece, and it was about, you know, characters having to make important decisions in a book and how that impacts the book. So, she wrote an entire piece that she presented to her class where they'd reach a moment in the book, and the class would have to come together with a consensus of what that choice would be, and if it happened one way, the story would move in one direction, and if it happened another, in the opposite direction. And she had this probably 10 different layers, and it was so engaging, and all of us were so interested in it, that I approached her afterward and just said that she needs to do something more with it, like maybe put it online, or maybe thinking about getting it published, because it was this amazing writing piece, and, and I would love for it to kind of go beyond just, you know, what it was used for in the classroom. So, she was excited about that. I participated last year with the National Education Association's Master Teacher Project, which was one of the most rewarding experiences I've ever had professionally. And so, we were invited back to DC this past weekend for a celebration of that learning and to learn about different ways that we can continue our teacher leadership efforts with the NEA. So, it was a great time and a way to reconnect with the teachers from across the country. We did get some information back, so the lessons that we have contributed are now available to teachers for free on BetterLesson.com, and these were some of the analytics. So, the lessons have been viewed over 1.3 million times, over 14, almost 15,000 resources have been downloaded, and this is just in the last few months. They've been favorited, in the last month, over 400,000 teachers visited Better Lesson, almost one in every 10 teachers in the country. So, it was exciting to see that, and to see how teachers are coming together to help support each other in ways, you know, where we might feel that the support is lacking. So, teachers relying on teachers. This is John Stock, the Executive Director of the NEA. These were just some other great people that I had a chance to work with. This is the Vice President, if I remember correctly, her name is Becky Pringle. And then this is the NEA team, and we got to tour the building and, you know, see some of the different places where the work takes place there. So, amazing people to work with, and they really have a lot of opportunities for teachers to lead from the classroom that I wasn't aware of, and that I think tons of teachers across the state aren't aware of. So, I hope to share that information with teachers, so that they'll know of those opportunities. And then finally, I've shared a little bit each month about the book that I have coming out, and I'm thrilled because Diary of a Real Bully is, has now materialized into a real thing after eight years of thoughts and ideas and this process. So, this is a proof, and I'd be happy to send it around and share it. It is the only copy, unfortunately, so far. They'll, they'll be in in January, and there are some changes, like the binding being different, and then also, there was a page with no text, so I've written that in myself. But most excitingly, the author, who is the art teacher for my school, was just named Keith Elementary's Teacher of the Year, so we were able to add that as well. So, I'm thrilled to have this, and as I've mentioned, Superintendent Flanagan has shared his thoughts on that, which are on the back cover, and I'm excited to share that with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Melanie. Excellent, and hope everything goes well today, rest of the day. Item D before lunch is discussion regarding criteria for grant programs, and we took Dr. Zile's suggestion and formatted it a little differently.
My, thanks.
Sorry. Any questions? Okay, those will be on the consent agenda later today, and...
There's a lot.
Still shoot for 12:45. We'll still shoot for 12:45, so we can make whatever that thing's going on later today. That Dan thing. He's ignoring me. 12:45.
We still have questions about grants after lunch.